All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, March 26th, a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed committee appointments. The first item on our agenda is a report from INF Associates regarding electric vehicle chargers. Please.
First, let me say, this is highly intimidating. I don't know if you realize it as being the people that are sitting up there, but I didn't, this is kind of a court-like session very often, but I'm glad to have been invited here.
Well, we have no authority to send you to jail, so don't worry. You can take a deep breath.
And my colleague Chris here, I've, uh...
But we can effectively recommend.
I have a lot of working tickets over my lifetime.
Greg, you may want to leave the room then. That's our police chief.
I've got to go. Most of them were in large halls, so I think...
Doesn't count.
Anyway, so Greg, is this?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes.
So Greg had invited us here to talk to you about a proposal that we have in front of the town for electric vehicle charging stations, in particular for level three charging stations, those are called DC fast chargers. So that's what we'll be talking about. But a little bit of the background first, real quick. So we are INF Associates. INF is a, what we call, a building and transportation decarbonization company. We are in the business of helping commercial building owners, municipalities, schools of all shapes and sizes to make their buildings more energy efficient and to increase the number of EV charging stations that are across the nation. So we call that transportation decarbonization. And we do everything from the initial consultation and advisory services to the actual installation and maintaining of all of equipment, whether it be in a building for energy efficiency or whether it be at EV charging station. My name is Jeff Rosenzweig, an account executive, business development manager, both tending to customers on the building side and on the transportation side. With me is Chris Willard. Chris is my boss and the director of sales. And he knows a lot about the EV market and the EV charging stations in general. So he's here to kind of back me up and answer a lot of the questions that I might not be able to answer. So a little bit about INF. I just told you generally what we do. We have a contract with Westchester County. And that contract is in conjunction with a very large electric vehicle charging station manufacturer called FLO, F-L-O. So the contract is between INF, FLO, and Westchester County for the provision of level two charging stations to all municipalities throughout Westchester. That's how we first came to meet Chris and Greg and Michael. And Rybrook is one of, as of now, 18 Westchester municipalities that are taking advantage of that program and that have committed to purchasing and installing level two charging stations throughout the town, throughout the villages, throughout the cities of Westchester. So that's how our relationship began. We also talked about doing some work to do energy analysis or energy audits in some buildings throughout town. That has not come to fruition yet, but we're still talking about that. And what we're here for specifically today is to discuss a new opportunity that we brought forth to you, which is the provision of fast chargers, or DC fast chargers, DCFC stations. So what has already been contracted and is going to be installed in the town is level two stations. Kind of the next level of a fast charger is, and by the way, for your needs, for the most part, you know, thus far, the level twos are more than adequate. And those are what are being installed throughout most of Westchester. DC fast chargers are a level up. And they enable most vehicles to charge in a time period of between 20, 40 minutes. So often used by electric vehicles that are traveling long distances. I don't know if any of you own an EV, but most EV owners are map out in their journey where they may be stopping for where those EV chargers exist and therefore may stop there along their route. It might be at a convenience station, it might be here in town, wherever it might be. So quite often used by, in those types of situations, also often used by fleet vehicles, police cars, any other types of vehicles that kind of need to get in and out very quickly. So we have, INF has a sister company. And I'm kind of going off the book here. We have a formal presentation, but I'm kind of getting to the point. INF has a sister company called Current Charge. Current Charge is, acts as an owner and operator of these DC fast chargers, which means we, or Current Charge owns the chargers. We install the chargers, we maintain the chargers. We're in essence leasing a area from you on which those chargers are going to be installed. And we assure that they're up and running 100% of the time. If they're not, it's on us to make sure they are. And we offer all of that at no cost. And the reason we're able to offer that at no cost is for two particular reasons. One is, we are receiving incentives from the utility and from the state that, in particular for DC fast chargers, make it particularly attractive to purchase and install them. And number two, we're offering a revenue share. Or we are offering a revenue share to the town. And it's the portion of that revenue share that's maintained or obtained by Current Charge that helps us pay for the servicing and the maintenance of those charging stations over time. So sort of the equivalent of a vending machine, you know, that you might rent and put in a building. That's kind of the easiest way to think about it, I think. Is that, you know, there, you're giving them permission to put that in there. You may or may not have a cost share plan with them, but it's providing a service to the people throughout the building that want a snack. Sort of similar situation here. You're offering that through Current Charge. It allows you to offer that charging service to residents, to non-residents that are looking for, looking for that charging station and to also, at the same time, obtain some revenue from that as a business. So that's what Current Charge is offering, and that's what we're here to talk about today. And Greg thought it would be a good idea to come and explain that and answer any questions that you all might have as it pertains to Current Charge and the...
And just to bring this home a little bit. So one of the questions there is, when we were looking at this issue, we went back and forth a lot about level two versus level three, which would meet the needs. And partially based on cost, there was the level threes at that time, we're going to cost, there's a big upcharge for it. Now with the incentives, the landscape has changed. So one of the questions is, I'm assuming that the level twos then could be upgraded to level threes in this program if we went in this direction. Is that correct or not?
That's correct.
So that's really the decision of the board, if they want to do that and/or do it for any other municipal fleet or anything else they might want to do.
That's right. And whether or not it's more or less appealing to you to be the owner?
Or lease it to...
Basically have us be the owner and lease that area. That's right. There's also, it also may or may not be a function of how you could charge for that charging, you know, if you're capable or desiring to do it, you know, as the town, as the village. And if you cannot or don't want to for, whether it be by law or, because it may not necessarily appear, you know, to the residents, you know, as though you're doing the best thing for the residents, then it might be best to have, you know, it might make more sense to have a third party do that.
Sure.
Reason being, you know, the revenue component, the revenue model is really what makes that work, makes a whole program work. So you sort of need to have the ability to charge enough to make up for the ongoing costs of DC fast chargers, because they're not, they're not cheap. The incentives are not going to cover.
Okay. So maybe you should go through the, you're going to go through the presentation or not?
Sure. So... So now I have, so a couple of things to know real quick about INF is, we are a Sourcewell, we have a Sourcewell contract, which enables you to not go out to bid. You didn't want to, and you could utilize Sourcewell for that or kind of piggyback on the Sourcewell contract. And the box on the right are really some accolades. It's an example of some of the, some of the things that we've achieved. We're a certified participating contractor with over 30 utilities throughout the country. We are national in scope. We are a NISERTA, New York State Energy Research Development Authority authorized partner. We are, we've installed a ton of EV ports nationally. And we are, in that regard, Con Edison's number one installer in the Con Edison territory of electric vehicle charging stations. We're also oddly enough, Con Edison's number one installer of LED lighting fixtures and LED lighting controls. And as I said before, we have the Westchester County contract for the installation of, not for the, for the provision of charging stations throughout the county.
What is D-A-A-S?
Decarbonization as a Service.
So what, decarbonization is a cer, it, it, it's a term that really means that's our primary business. So decarbonization of buildings, decarbonization of, you know, vehicles on the road and everything associated with it. It also, in some circles, refers to the financing of equipment based on the energy savings that derive from energy efficiency measures that are undertaken. This is an example of our, what we call our turnkey approach on the electric vehicle side. So we literally do everything associated with the installation of a charging station from start to finish. It always starts with a site assessment, where we're working with you to determine where the best location is for those charging stations, which type of charging stations they should be, what the usages of them, you know, the distance to the nearest power source, things like that. That's what encompasses the site visit or the site evaluation. We design, we engineer, we supply, procure and supply the charging stations. We maintain them over time. And probably most importantly, we manage the entire process for securing the rebates and the incentives from the utility and from the state to help pay for the stations. This just emphasizes the markets that we're in. As I said before, commercial office buildings, multifamily, residential, retail hospitality, and most is municipal, schools, universities, et cetera. And the use case, by the way, is different for each of these types of institutions. For example, like a Target or a Stop and Shop are most interested in bringing business to their stores. So they want to attract, right, shoppers. And one way to attract shoppers is to install charging stations and make sure that those charging stations are publicly accessible and publicly visible on the apps that are available where drivers could find the nearest station. And they're also much more interested in the revenue model than most others are, right? So not only they want the shopper there, but they may want to maybe not charge the shopper for the first half an hour, an hour. But once you're there for an hour, you know, start, start upcharging. Or if a driver is really using the parking lot as overnight parking and they're not shopping, you know, it's putting at extremely high price on charging. Even if you're not charging, but that plug is in your vehicle, you know, to make sure that that driver is being charged during that time. So again, the cases, the use case is a little different depending upon the type of entity you're talking to. So we are hardware agnostic. And what that means is, we don't care, we don't have a preference as to which manufacturer of charging stations you're going to install. It happens to be that with our Westchester County contract, that's specific to FLO charging stations. If you wanted to receive those stations at the particular pre-contracted price, that doesn't mean that you only need to install FLO. You can install any of the other manufacturers, but you're not necessarily going to get that pre-contracted predetermined price that's in our Westchester County contract with FLO. If you said, you know, there's one municipality we're talking to that is just very stuck on Tesla. They have a lot of Teslas in their town, and they think it's a stigma thing. So they want the Tesla above, above all else, as an example. So we can accommodate that as easily as any other, any other manufacturer.
Are there any changes in these sites? I mean, when, when people use them, are they equal to all EV vehicles?
Generally speaking, yes. The, the major difference that can occur is, as we're talking about now, a level two charger versus a level three or DC fast charger. The conduit size, the electrical changes. So the engineering and design is different. And it's more caught, the infrastructure cost is greater for that.
Of course, but I mean to the user, to the person that is...
Could any vehicle use any of these chargers?
Yeah, so any of these manufacturers can be used by any vehicle on the road, including even Tesla now is making universal chargers.
Adapters, right, or something?
In fact, not even adapter. They're, they're making chargers that are universal, that can charge any vehicle.
Any store, yeah.
And most of the vehicles, like even Teslas, if they need to use a charge point at ABB, you know, one of these other units, they have adapters to use a Tesla charger as well. So everything we install is universal and can charge any vehicle on the road today.
On, for either one?
Yeah, for either one.
Okay, and the user feels that they're equal?
The user experience with Tesla is just much different because it's a, it's plug and charge. You, Tesla pulls into a Tesla station, you just plug the charger in, and the transaction happens automatically between the vehicle and the charging station. With these other manufacturers, what is going on now in New York State is they're actually starting to require much more strict requirements. ISO 151185 and parts 20 and OCPP, these other technical requirements that New York State's requiring. These are the handshake agreements that Tesla offers to their vehicles. All these other manufacturers, ChargePoint, FLO, ABB, Blink, they're adapting to these new requirements in New York State. We're not quite there yet, but as those requirements go into place later this year, everyone will have to adhere to those standards in the industry. That's the biggest difference right now. Otherwise, they all work the same. You walk up to a charger, just like a gas pump. You swipe your credit card, you tap your phone to pay, and you start your transaction, you put your plug into the car. The only difference is the Tesla station, it's pull the plug, put in the car, and it automatically starts.
And they automatically bill you or something?
Exactly. And they automatically bill you.
Yeah. Right, you have an account holder set up.
All of them will do the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to know, because if one is different than the other, how do you choose who gets what?
Well, there, there are certain quality differences, and there are certain software differences. So you have your hardware, which is the physical station, and you have your software that's in the station.
Because I would imagine that familiarity with the user is also part of the issue.
Yeah, like, Westchester County is an example, wants kind of a fluid, common experience throughout the county.
Which makes sense.
Which is why they're really trying to install, you know, FLO everywhere. I think Westchester County, for the most part now, is probably most familiar with ChargePoint. And ChargePoint's a great, you know, probably the largest, you know, distributed station in the United States right now. But, and there are a bunch of them that you'll see throughout Westchester. But FLO, for a couple of different reasons, was chosen by the county. And it's still, it's a very high-quality, very, very durable product. They've manufactured, and they're a Canadian company, and they're manufactured in Canada, and they stand up very well to like harsh winters. But also, it's a price point slightly better than ChargePoint. Like anything else, there's, there's always a little bit of give and take. But some are just as equal quality and less cost. And then there are some subtle differences that, that may make a difference, like a cord, is it a retractable cord? Or is it one that's like going to lay on the ground? If somebody doesn't put it back, you know, up like a garden hose? And some other, you know, features like that. But I would say the biggest is the software and what you can do with that software, right? All the, all the tracking, queuing, you know, you could, if you know you want to park at a particular station location, right, you can put into an app to notify you when that station becomes available, right? So you know when to pull up to it. And time of day use, the ability to change, as I was describing the situation before with Target or the Stop and Shop, where based on a certain amount of time or the time of day, you want to change how you charge the customer, right? Can you charge a customer a dollar per kilowatt hour? Can you charge a customer a fixed price, dollar amount per hour, per minute? Think then, and a wider variety of options.
So we're in competition with all those stores also, is what you're saying?
It depends on where you put the charger, right? I mean, if you have it here for, if you have it outside Town Hall, not necessarily. You know, they're still really trying to attract shoppers more than anything else. What did you, what did you mean by that?
For us, we're really just, you know, this was a county program that had been offered. That's why we looked into it. The two places, if you remember from previous meetings, where we're going to be putting these are going to be here and at Garibaldi. Those are, those were the two spots that we were looking at. Eight spots?
Um, four. Eight here and four there, yeah.
Eight spots, yeah, four spots.
Eight spots is four chargers, four dual chargers. And down at Garibaldi, it's two duels.
Yeah, and this will be, I mean, you know, and again, we're not making the decision tonight on, you know, what exactly we're going with.
No, I just wanted to see if it would actually be useful.
It would, it would make sense to do the fast chargers, for sure, because that'll turn it around quicker for people, right?
There is and there isn't. You've got to really think it out. You have to understand there's a different philosophy on both. And part of it is, and you'll go through this, but there was an interest in the, in the, the level threes. So that's why we, now with the new incentives, we wanted them to come here and talk to the board and see what the options are. But just realize it's a different structure. They're, they are going to own, lease and maintain the chargers. And we get a percentage that ranges between 1 and 10%, right? The other way...
Do you decide what the, what the charge to the customer is at that point?
With your input.
Yes, but it's ultimately your decision at the end of the day, right? On the other way...
Right, you'd say, so it's a revenue model for us, which is how, you know, you...
To make back their money.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, understood.
Zero, in this model, you have zero out of pocket. Literally zero out of pocket, right?
Well, we have zero out of pocket with two also, don't we?
Correct.
No way.
Only because of the Westchester County.
Yes.
Westchester County has another program, which is one where they're offering 50%, a 50% rebate on the cost of the purchase and installation of charging stations. That's in addition to Con Edison incentives, and if you're eligible for it, NISERTA state rebates.
The county's putting their own money into it as well, that's for us. So, so that there's, one model is the leasing model that they own and maintain, and they're putting up the risk and the cost.
And that's for the fast ones.
So that's their revenue, they'll get the revenue.
Okay.
For the majority of the revenue.
The other one?
The other one, the board sets the rate. You can charge, you can not charge, you can charge to break even, you could charge to make money. The rate is all set by us, but we do have to maintain those units after the warranty periods, I guess, that are on there, right? And then we'll have, we would have to maintain it. So that's, it's a different structure. You just have to be comfortable with which one you prefer.
And do we have to sign an agreement that we have to keep you as the operator for a certain period of time? So what is that timeframe?
The 10 years.
Yeah, so there's two slides, two slides left to show you. And they're both on Current Charge. So Current Charge designs, installs, owns, operates, maintains the stations. So we, Current Charge pays all of the operational costs, maintenance costs, all the installation costs. So it's going to be separately metered stations that will have the Current Charge name as the customer. So that's a big difference. So Current Charge is paying the electricity costs for those stations and the software and warranty and everything. But it's, it's important to note that because Current Charge owns the stations, we also want to make sure that they're maintained and that they're working, because it's our revenue source. So you're, we have a revenue split that we offer with you or with the customer that ranges from Current Charge getting 99% of the revenue in year one to Current Charge getting 90% of the revenue in year 10. So, and it's a 10-year, it's a 10-year term agreement.
And they submitted the proposal. Well, you can see the details of how that stages up, what you have.
Yes, sorry.
And you have the ability to buy out, you know, at any point, to own the stations if you want. Again, because we paid for the stations and the stations are expensive.
How expensive are the stations?
They're about $75,000 each.
Per dual?
Yeah. It's about a seven, eight-year simple ROI. So a 10-year lease is about where you break even and start generating revenue.
And by then, you'll need a new machine.
Yeah, but then the infrastructure will be a place for you already.
And the technology is going to change.
Now, the technology might change, as does most technology, but as Chris just said, the infrastructure and the ground is yours.
Yeah, right. All right, good information.
David, did you have questions?
No, I, I think my questions have been answered. I, I gather that the level three chargers are what you analogize to vending machines.
Yes, yes, because with the county, with the county, with the county program, with the level twos, it would be, we would own, yeah.
So we would get all the revenue.
We would get all the revenue, and we'd have to maintain it.
If you decide to charge revenue.
So what does the maintenance look like for, what are the maintenance for, for both the level two and the level three? I'm sure you have some data from existing machinery.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so our team actually does the maintenance on them. We have a full technician, licensed electricians that would come out and service those units. I mean, the, the things that happen most often are software issues on the backend, some firmware updates that can be handled remotely. Those are the typical issues. Every now and then, there will be some sort of retractor cable, maybe breaks, you know, someone didn't put the, the port back on the hook correctly, and it got damaged, and the port might need to be replaced. Maybe the screen cracked or something. But most of those pieces, when they're parts, are covered under the manufacturer's warranties, that we typically purchase extended warranties from the manufacturers. And then we would have our team be the labor to replace those parts under warranty.
And this is level two or level three, I'm sorry?
It would go for both. Typically with level three stations, any vendor, any developer or manufacturer you work with is going to require you to have a maintenance contract in place because of just the cost of the units, but also the requirement of the uptime of those units. Level two units, it's typically optional to have any sort of maintenance program in place. It's recommended, you know, so that those units can be utilized by, by drivers and residents. But it, but it is optional for those units if you want to have a...
And we should mention, the unit for the level three... And we should mention, the unit for the level three is much bigger because it has more infrastructure in it too. But it's a lot bigger piece of equipment than the level twos.
Yeah.
Where do they have it, Crawford Park, that's a level two?
Yeah.
I may not have understood something. Level two, we own it, therefore it would make sense for us to get a maintenance contract. Level three, you own it, would we still have to have a maintenance contract?
No, we would have the maintenance contract ourselves, we would maintain it ourselves in this model.
So there's no maintenance cost to us whatsoever?
No cost whatsoever, no.
Do you know the cost of the maintenance contract for a level two?
Yeah, so we had already put that in front of you, I believe, but typically it is $250 per port, per year for our preventative maintenance program. And that is just to come out and do annual health checks and, you know, make sure the station's clean and functioning properly. And then we have our tiered emergency service program, which is sort of the gold standard, where if anything were to happen, it's a 48-hour response time to get the team out to fix the unit, parts and labor included in that 750 per port a year rate in the emergency services.
Is that 750 in addition to the 250?
No.
So, no, it's like lower tier, 250 preventative, and then like the gold tier, 750.
Is this something that we can go and find another person to service it, or does it have to be through you?
No, no, you can definitely find others to do this. Manufacturers offer this, that they work with partners like ourselves to offer. You can use other local Westchester firms that do something similar to us to offer it. It's just part of our turnkey services leveraging one, our swell contract that we have, but also our Westchester County contract.
Right, yes, it does also, it's, remember, we're not, we're not doing this on our own. Remember, this isn't something that we're going out and doing. We're doing this as part of the county...
No, I totally understand, so they're intending us to do this.
We have to go with what is provided in those.
But they're not providing it, you have to buy this separately.
Well, no, the maintenance, you could do this happily, but just realize, so what you would do is, in theory, if you wanted to, if you wanted to at least break even on level twos, you want to make sure you charge enough to at least cover your maintenance costs.
Yes.
But that has to do with the level twos. What they're giving a presentation on right now with the level threes, which is a different county program, which would be all inclusive.
Comparing apples to apples here, what the cost eventually is to us.
I think I could help clarify that a little bit.
Yeah.
So the proposal, the county proposal that we put in front of you and was signed is for level two charging stations. There was a five-year maintenance, I believe, included in that, and five-year software included in that. And that net cost to you came out to zero for those level two stations. And that was what caused the county to contribute 50% on top of the Con Edison incentives. So that, then, again, that was for the stations and the installation and the warranty and the maintenance and the software, everything, start to finish.
Okay.
Now, the town, the village could also own level three stations. You don't need us to come in as the owner-operator of level three, level, I'm switching the vernacular between level three and DC fast chargers, they're the same thing. Sorry about that.
That's okay, I follow.
So you can as easily purchase and install and own yourself level three charging stations. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Please note that is not in our proposed budget.
No.
Now, so what we're talking about now, separate from the level two proposal that was signed already, is this new opportunity for this new company that was created, Current Charge, to ourselves be the owner-operator, right? If we are the owner-operator, we're maintaining it, right? And everything else, because we want to make sure it's working, right? If it's not working, we're not making money, we're losing money on it. So we are in essence charging ourselves for the maintenance and the upkeep. But you have a maintenance agreement for, and that, like any other maintenance agreement for any other product, vary, you know, in term and in price, so as Chris was explaining. But what you have signed is a five-year.
If we had a level two charger now, would it be possible at some point in time to switch to level three?
No.
No. No, so the infrastructure is quite different. Just the voltage in which the chargers run. Level two chargers operate on 208, 240 volt, single-phase power. And level three chargers typically run on three-phase, 480 volt power. So much, much higher power, higher voltage. So to change the infrastructure from 208, 240 to 480 is quite the endeavor, actually. Bigger conduit size, bigger wire size.
And redo it.
Utility probably has to bring in bigger power size.
And you still have to complete the evaluation that we could do the level threes at the no cost, right? You still want to do a little bit more review of the, of the...
Vocation.
Whether or not you need a transformer, right, and anything else, you still need to complete that review.
We would need to run the engineering through Con Edison and determine, you know, that they can bring the power to the location to support it. And then determine the, they call customer-side infrastructure.
We have the approvals, we have all the reviews done for level two. We would have to just see if the board want to go with level threes, if the infrastructure can handle it.
Yeah. The utility has an obligation to bring power to site if requested. It's just a matter of when and how they would be able to do it.
Right, right.
And in terms of timing, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, level threes could happen pretty quickly. But the level twos, you're in a queue with other Westchester County municipalities. Is that correct? Anytime between this year, this year and next summer is my recollection?
There's a lot of little caveats to that. The level two stations can happen, I would say timeline's probably very similar. The level two stations, the delay we're waiting on is the approval from the utility for funding and Westchester County for their cost share funding that they're offering in order to move forward into construction, right? The level three side, yes, we could move forward because we would be the ones putting the investment in. The delay on that side would be the utility bringing power to site.
Got it.
So that could be 12, 24 months. We don't really know until we start talking to the utility.
Understood.
I have one last question. As far as charging, how, the cost, just so I have a comparison, what does somebody usually charge their customers for one, because we have to decide on revenue?
So with, we'll separate this into two pieces. With the level two charging stations, I've been working with the city of White Plains for quite some time on this, as well as we're rolling out about 100 level two chargers across their municipal garages. The way they set their rate structure is the same as their municipal garage hourly rate structure. They want to match it, whether you're parking a gas vehicle or an electric vehicle, you're gonna get the same charging rate. Others have done curb side parking, and they'll match the same rate as the meters on the curb side. But there really is no restriction or set legislation to determine how you want to price it. A lot of times, we help our clients determine the charging for charging rate by doing market analysis of other local chargers and seeing what the sort of median rate is for those chargers in that area. And there is a threshold, right, just like gasoline, you know? If it's 250 on one side of the street and it's $3 on the other, where are you gonna go, right? You're gonna go to probably the cheaper one. So there is a threshold with electric vehicles as well, but we can help you determine those rates. On the level three charger side, it is a higher cost often because you are getting more power and you are getting a faster charge, so you are paying a premium for that. It can vary, it's a wide range. It can be by kilowatt, it can be by time session of the session. But typically, any driver that pulls in, let's say with a 20% battery and charges up to 80%, they're probably paying anywhere from $15 to $20 for that electricity. So we can also help determine what those rates might be for level three chargers as well.
How do you guys determine the rate for when you guys, because ultimately you set the rate on the level threes, how do you go about that?
Very similar approach, I know, market analysis, look at resources like PlugShare.com, you know, determine what other charging rates are in that vicinity.
I'm sorry, what is the website?
PlugShare.com. I mean, ultimately, for us, we want to be competitive as well, right? We don't want to lose charging revenue or utilization on the chargers because the model is set too high and you can go down the road and Target is setting, you know, the rate at free, you know? So EV drivers are gonna go to where they're gonna get the best cost, as any of us would, right? So we want to be competitive with what the market can dictate.
And to say, the board, the one thing that we've talked about is, you may or may not, but you may get drivers coming off, traveling on the hutch, since this is a location, if it's less than their, some of the rest stops, you know, this is close enough that they might go to the level three charger here if the price was comparable or less, I guess, than the rest stops. So obviously, from a revenue standpoint, that's good, but just be aware, you know, there may be a little bit more, a few more, some more cars amount that would come into the parking lots.
And is the price to every person that is thinking about changing to level three the same? Are you changing any of them, or is it a set price?
For the charging? It's likely that we would tier the charging models, where during the daytime, where there's peak utilization and higher energy costs, charge a higher price. We'd have to do some analysis on what the ConEd rates are in this area and determine what the peak price periods are in this area to sort of set those rates. There's also time of use rates for overnight charging. So if someone were to come and plug in at, you know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, but they need a quick charge, we could potentially lower the rate at that time of day so that they can get a better price on charging for charging.
There is also software that allows you to charge different rates for different people?
No.
No, but that's interesting, how does that work? And why? Yeah.
They may want to charge administrators, teachers, a low rate, whereas anyone else in the public, a higher rate. As an example, in the village or town, same thing, right? You will have the option, or can have the option, based on an access code, right, to the station.
There are a lot of ways to interpret my question. I guess my question, and I'm glad that you actually went through that, and I appreciate it because it's opening up a whole new world, but the other issue is tier three cost. You're, you are funding the entire cost on your own, but I would imagine as time goes on, the cost may come down because you're doing so many, will that change at all, the cost?
We really view it on a site-by-site, project-by-project basis. I mean, and as time goes on, and perhaps the cost of the charging station itself, it drops. We could offer a different model. Just right now, we try to offer the best possible, you know, proposal with what the market has.
Got it, right, because I don't see 1% revenue as an incentive.
You mentioned the level three prices are higher because of the fast charge. The, if, it might be an unfair question, but is there any average you could say is 50% higher, 5% higher? Is there any, how much higher is it, I guess, because I don't have electricity, I'm trying to understand. How much higher would a fast charge be?
Yeah, it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of level two charging happens, you know, either like at the workplace, during the workday, over a six, eight-hour period of time, or oftentimes overnight in a multifamily or a single-family home setting. And it really is on energy bill reflections for a lot of those. Whereas fast charging is more destination and, you know, corridors and whatnot. It's hard, it's hard to say exactly, but it can be anywhere from, you know, maybe a level two charger, you're paying $5 to $10 for energy for a charge-up, whereas a level three, you know, maybe somewhere between 15 to 25.
For the same amount of output?
Yeah, it's really just about peak demand and, because as, as you scale up output with your energy, you're also paying more in energy costs to the utility because of the peak demand that's being delivered, right? Your utility's gonna charge you higher service and demand rates when they're giving you more energy. So when your costs go up, your cost to consumer has to go up as well.
So a 5 to 10, on an average daytime, high usage time period, a five, the equivalent of a 5 to 10 might be a 15 to 20, is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, don't hold me to it.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to get a sense of scope, a sense of scope.
There's a lot of variables, right? What type of vehicle is it, how fast can the vehicle charge? What is the need of the battery of that vehicle?
Yeah.
The charger, what's the output?
A lot of, lot of conditions on that, I get it, I'm just trying to get a understanding of it, yeah.
Also, if you think you're gonna cater to the, you know, the long-haul driver, right? You may want to set a price that becomes comparable to filling a gas tank up, you know, with gasoline.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You may know what your dollar per kilowatt hour cost is to the utility, right? So you may just want to take that number and jack it up a little bit so that you're not necessarily in the revenue game, but you're just covering your costs.
One more question?
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
One more question. So we have, say we need, we were looking at the four dual ports in front of the Littol. Could you do two level two and two, two level three? Or is the infrastructure different and that doesn't make sense?
You can, yeah. Currently, with what we have under contract, it's not possible. We could revise that, we would have to...
It's an option.
Our engineers would have to revise the design. We'd have to go back to the utility and request more power. And then the, on the customer-side infrastructure, you would need, you know, transformers to step down 480 volt to lower voltage to supply to the level two chargers.
Got it.
Or vice versa, you would need a step-up transformer to supply power to the level three charger.
Okay.
There would need to be some site design considerations revised.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions?
A lot of information.
Yes, very helpful, thank you.
We'll probably be looking to put this on as an agenda item at our next meeting.
Okay.
So that at least we, because the sooner we, you know, the sooner we make the decision, the sooner we get into the county's queue.
Of course.
It's, it's something, you know, if we decide level two, so it's something that we want to just...
Move on.
Move on, yeah, while the program is also still available, while both programs...
We've already signed all the contracts with the county, so we're good to go there.
Yeah.
So we're in the queue already?
No, because we haven't made a decision.
Just kind of been sitting with them, yeah.
But Con Edison still needs to be contacted.
Right now, I've just kind of put everything on hold, not knowing.
Thank you.
All right.
Since you're the mayor and since I'm here in front of you right now, I want to make you aware of one thing before we leave. You may already be aware of this, but going off topic a little bit. NYSERTA, the state, has begun a program called the Clean Green Schools.
We have no control over the schools in...
And I'm not gonna say anymore.
But we are all taxpayers.
But we can certainly share that information with the school board.
Next time you're out for a beer with the super, I got some stuff for you to tell.
All right, clean green schools.
Clean green schools, can you send it to us, they'll be happy to forward it?
Share that information with the school staff and school board, okay, perfect, yeah. Yeah, they don't even have to follow village code when they're doing construction projects.
And they need help, they really need help.
It's in all of New York State, well, except for the cities. The cities have control over the schools.
Anyway, shout out to Greg, who's been awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
So just to recap, we're looking to make, hopefully, potentially we'll have a decision after the next meeting. Which is April 9th, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to resolution number one. Consider a request for an exemption extension of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Doral Greens HOA.
Whereas on April 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal, gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st through September 30th, effective May 1st, 2024. And whereas under the code, properties with at least five acres can apply for a partial, full or a partial exemption or extension of the local law. And whereas the application has been distributed to the properties that are eligible for that particular, to request an exemption or extension. And also, it's been, information's been on our website. And whereas on February 2024, Representatives of Doral Greens HOA submitted an application for an exemption for the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law as well as the considerations raised in the application from Representatives of Doral Greens HOA, the Village of Riddick Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Doral Greens HOA.
Thank you, Chris, and I believe we have Representatives from Doral Greens, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Russ Jelenek from Guy, George and Jelenek.
I'm so sorry.
On behalf of Doral Greens, I have with me this evening Luigi Barello from Mario Barello Landscaping, as well as Elizabeth Huthway from Prime Locations Management Company. And since I don't think it's the intent to hear me give legal arguments, I will turn it over to our landscaper to... it over to our landscaper to explain what steps he's prepared to make in order to try and comply as much as he can with the law and also satisfy the the concerns of the board.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luigi Barello, the owner of Mario Brolin Sun Landscaping. We've been working at Doral for probably close to 30 years. Hey, we take care of other properties in in Rye and Larchmont, and they have this law already. So we did purchase battery charge pack blowers. So we are using already a lot less gas-powered blowers. So we did our spring cleanup already at Doral, and we did use the battery charge blowers. The biggest difference, obviously, is with the noise, but it's, it took us a little bit longer to clean the property. And the guys are using, excuse me, the rake, the hand rake more, so they're not too happy about that, but they understand that's, that's what we need to do. And that's what we've done so far. I don't know if you guys have any other questions or.
I mean, that's, you know, to me, that's, that's great to hear. Our legislation actually is only effective from May through.
Yes.
The end of, so that's, that's great to hear. I guess, I guess the question is, what's your intention during the season when, when this law is applicable?
Well, the, the biggest part, we would use the, the gas blowers is in the spring because that's when it's really dirty. You know, we have the branches, the leaves, and in the fall. But once the season goes out, the property is nice and clean, and we're on the property once a week. So we plan on use it even less. Plus, the gas prices are still through the roof, so I have no problem with it using the, the battery charge blowers.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, if if you're going to be using the electric blowers, then you don't need an exemption.
Well, if we, if we could get the exemption, obviously, it's, it'll be faster, quicker for us to use it, clean the properties, especially in the spring and the fall. That's when we really need the exemption.
Wouldn't have that.
If I step in.
Please. You might have that ability.
As set forth in the application, the proposal is to reduce the number of gas blowers that are being used from four to two during the season where the law is applicable. Also to use the battery pack blowers for driveways and walkways, and also to try and incorporate the use of other electric devices like lawnmowers and trimmers during the season in question in order to try and do as much as we can to comply with the law, but still also try and manage costs for the, for the, you know, homeowners association. And we're also, you know, as time progresses, we're looking to try and integrate more, a greater use of the electric devices. And as time goes on, hopefully eliminate the use of gas blowers. Obviously, that's down the road. But we look at this as an incremental thing, starting with this year. And and my understanding is that there's potential for a, a partial exemption or whatever conditions the board feels is appropriate. We're certainly willing to comply with. We want to work with the, with the community and, and at the same time, be mindful of the fact that just to completely eliminate the gas blows during the peak season would, as I'm sure you've heard before, involve a significant increase in costs for the association, which would be obviously somewhat of a hardship.
Yes, and we have, we have heard that. I think we've had a number of applications come before us. And, you know, given that, given that you're operating in, in Ryan Larchmont, you know, other communities that have these, this legislation in place, certainly puts you at an advantage because you're already investing in the technology needed to, to conform to the, to the legislation. So I think for, for me, it's heartening to hear that. And and I guess my question would be whether you'd be willing to put some of those conditions into the resolution itself of reducing to the, the two, using only electric on some of the hardscape areas. I think you said walkways and driveways.
Yes.
I have a, and can you share with us what, what you have, what machinery you have that you're actually pleased with?
We have the, the battery charge backpack.
Yes, brand.
I don't know the exact brand, but we bought two from Home Depot. We bought a couple from Argento and Son.
Argento, huh?
But we do have them.
All right. No, and it's, yeah. I mean, I mean, this is, to me, this.
In the right direction. This is what we're trying to do.
Significant reduction from.
Yeah.
Some of the other applications. I'd be almost inclined to do two year on this one because, because of setting the example.
This one.
I'd still stay with one year.
Okay. All right. I guess, are you comfortable with having those conditions in the, in the exemption? That it's a reduction from four to two and the user.
I would say in half, because this way.
In half.
If you add more, delete, you know, whatever you need.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
50% of the units would be electric.
I think it would be disingenuous to have it in our application as a proposal and then not.
No, not having it in the.
To comply with that. So we would certainly be willing to make that a.
So, Ralph, leave that to you.
Okay.
How, how we want to put it in, or Chris.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just take a shot at it, and then we'll clean it up. But basically, I'll just syndicate that.
Unextended.
Yep. That the.
Right.
Therefore be resolved that of consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised in the applications from Doral Greens HOA, the Village of Rybrook hereby approves with conditions the request for an exemption enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Doral Greens through September, sorry, through October 1st, 2024, which will get you another year, just realized.
Right.
With the following conditions, that electric blowers are used on the driveways and walkways, and that 50% of the gas blowers be electric.
The blowers, not gas.
The gas blowers be electric.
The blowers, right.
The gas blowers be, yeah, the blowers be electric.
Also, the law.
Well, no, I think we're only dealing with gas, with the blowers.
I'm sorry, you're on.
Does that sound proper?
Yes, that, that was consistent with our proposal.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
They'll move as they change.
Any questions, comments? Sorry to make you have to wait so long through the EV charger. As you can see, we're very committed to, you know, environmental causes here in Rybrook. We're, we're trying to do our part.
It's very educational.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Nope.
Yes, no idea.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution number two, considering a request for exemption extension, chapter 158, section 2.1 of village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for CPW. I'm just going to shorten it. I hope you're okay with it.
That's fine.
Chris has to read the resolution. Do you not have to read the?
I'll, I'll just move down to the resolve clause because everything else is the same. We have an application from Cerebral Palsy of Westchester that therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised in the application by representatives of Cerebral Palsy of Westchester, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either approves, denies, or approves of the conditions or requests for an exemption in the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Cerebral Palsy of Westchester.
Thank you, Chris. And we'll hold off on motions until we figure out what we're doing here. You do have a tough act to follow, where they're, where they're already starting to.
I know. I was going to say, you guys start out with a little bit of a low blow here.
Yeah, so.
Electric vehicle charging stations. Now I have to come out with a landscaper who needs a gas blower, right?
So, please.
So, we maintain cerebral palsy in Westchester. We've been there for several years. And we want, we're looking for exemption from the ban because the property is nine acres or so. And unlike the previous landscaper, our paved areas are larger parking lots. So it would be a lot more laborious for us to use electric blowers to blow up the lots and even the lawn areas. But we, we have been implementing electric blowers as well. We're mulching with mowers, so we're trying to lessen all of it. But and as far as me going with the technology, I want to go with it, but I just feel that battery-powered equipment has not reached where it's sustainable cost-wise yet.
Questions?
Got any?
I'm sorry?
Have you purchased any?
Yeah, you have some.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Two years ago, actually.
Okay, so what?
As far as they'll start at first, so.
But you've purchased battery-powered blowers, any other battery equipment?
No, I haven't. Because the cost is just too, too, it's too high. It does, it's not effective, you know?
What do you do in Scarsdale?
Oh, just residential homes. But we use electric blowers, and we implemented the mulch, mulching on the mowers, so.
All right.
But, you know, residential homes are a little different than a commercial parking lot or a commercial building.
Right. Do you use any of the electric in concert with other equipment at CBW? Or are you only using the gas?
Really just gas here.
And how often are you, I guess, like, a couple of questions. How often are you?
If we're not blowing the lots all the time, then maybe we'll use electric just for a walkway or whatever, but.
Right.
Mostly.
Right. During that, during that peak season, that kind of May through October, during the, you know, not leaf season, not spring cleanup season, but during the regular mowing season, how often are you servicing that lot?
Well, we're there once a week.
You're there once a week?
And then you have to remember.
And how many guys do you usually have there?
Usually three or four.
Okay.
But not everybody has a blower, you know. That, I try to limit for sure.
Right.
Because of the noise. And we also don't have any residential neighbors there either, so.
Right. And I, I think, you know, part of it is noise, but a lot of what the intent of the legislation is really greenhouse gas emission and, and other aspects. My personal opinion on this one, this is the first nonprofit we've had come.
Yes.
Before us. And, you know, I think CBW has been a great neighbor and does, it provides a great service to the community in our area. And so.
Do you, what hours do you go there?
Oh, we usually go on Saturday mornings.
Oh, when nobody's there?
When nobody's there.
Ah, I got you.
So the noise, right.
Yeah.
Well, they do have, they do have people that, they do have some permanent residential there as well.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do. But they're in a house away from the buildings. But on Saturday mornings, there's no administrative people there. There are less people throughout the place as well, so.
So can I ask a question, a couple of questions? So we do have some commercial properties that, that have asked for exemptions, but they are starting to implement electric for their parking lot areas, like shopping centers. Actually, they've had to come in. So with some parking lot areas that is trying to do things on the electric, it's a little different with being not-for-profit. But do you do around the house where the permanent residential is?
Yes, we do.
Would, if the board, if it was something the board or you could consider, would you, since that's more like a residential area, would you do electric around the house? Is that a consideration that you could consider?
If, if we had to, I would, but I prefer not to.
Well, I think the board's just looking for some type of effort.
We want something back. We want something back.
I would say to that point.
I gotta tell you, he is tough this time.
And I would just say to that point, you know, I think, you know, the, the writings on the wall in, in the communities in Westchester.
Yes.
That a lot of communities in Westchester are starting to move towards this type of legislation. You know, we're actually kind of slow, you know, we're late to the table.
Right.
Compared to some of our neighbors. And, you know, I think that it would be of you to start to switch things over a little bit. Because, you know, while we, while there may be an exemption granted for this year, i- there's nothing to say that that would be, you know, if we find that, you know, if it gets to a point where CPW is the only game in town left that's still using gas blowers, it would be very difficult for us to approve an exemption.
Yes.
In the coming years.
Not only that, he has clients not in Rybrook, that he, where he's already had to convert.
Right. So, so given that you, you know, you, you've seen what it's like working in other communities.
Yes.
You know, I think there, you know, there's going to come a time when we will be granting no exemptions.
I was just, I was just going to say that I think you can assume that we can be generous now.
The first year.
But a year from now, if you come back and say, well, I'm still doing things exactly the way I did in March of 2024, I for one will be very reluctant to give you a second extension. I'm going to have to see something on your part that indicates you're moving towards our goal. If I don't see it, you will end up with a one-year exemption, end of sentence.
I understand. So we'll use electric around the house.
Okay.
The more you use, the more likely it is that the future will be good too.
Hey.
I don't know how much more I could be in terms of blunt.
I understand.
You're blunt?
So what does happen down the road, though, is the consumer actually ends up paying for it.
Yes, unfortunately, you're right.
Right.
Yes.
But I think, yeah, that's why the board's trying to be reasonable with looking at larger properties to come up, but also send the message that we, they want to see efforts moving forward to become electric. Yep.
Right. And, and again, I think that it's.
I'm sorry.
If a lot of the communities around us are all doing the same thing, and, and this is a law within, within our community, this is, I mean, this is really going to be that there's still going to be competition to, you know, for customers. And, you know, that there's, there's, you know, this, it's, it's really going to become the norm.
And we maintain residential, you know, residential properties as well, so we're going to be using them there.
Right.
As well.
Yeah. And that's why we're thinking like around the house, maybe that's more like the residential because people live in there.
You know, if you're willing, if you're okay with it, we're going to put that in the condition of the exemption, just that there will be electric used around that. And it has to do only with the blowers and only from May through.
Small recovery.
All right. So can I, did, everyone hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, for one year, yes.
One year.
One year.
Yes. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
We'll reference that the house with the permanent housing.
Yes, we'll reference it.
Hey, Gray.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Have a good night.
Resolution number three, considering awarding contract 2402, residential sanitation collection services, including recycling, bulk trash, green waste, white goods, and bulk metal.
Yeah.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook solicited bids for contract 24 dash O2, residential solid waste collect services, including recycling, bulk trash, green waste, white goods, and bulk metal. And whereas the bid was advertised in the Westmore News, and the bid opening was also made available on the Empire State Purchasing Group bid system. And whereas at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, March 20th, all bids received were opened in summarize below. We only received one bid, which was from CRP sanitation. And that is covering a five-year period, which has been approved by the Westchester County Solid Waste District. And it's for a, the base bids range from 1,111,425 and 30 cents to, in year five, 1,432,715 and 34 cents. Also, the monthly rear yard collection goes from 30, 30, 35, 40, and 40 over the five years. That's monthly. That's optional for residents if they so choose. And also, there's a senior and military discount of 25%. And also, there's a, an alternate two for the disposal of the street sweepings. That is basically 160 for the first two years, then 175 for the next two, then 188, and that's a price per ton. And whereas upon review of the bids, the administrator and superintendent of public works determine the lowest bidder to beat all the requirements of CRP sanitation. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby awards contract 24 dash O2 residential collection services, including all the services we mentioned before, to CRP sanitation for curbside agreement for total bid price. And it's the total of all the years combined of 6,461,0044 and 24 cents. And also awards alternate one, rear yard residential monthly cost and senior and military discount. And an alternate two, disposal of street sweepings, all for a five-year period starting June 1st, 2024. Be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to sign and execute any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Uh, two quick comments and then I'll open it up to comment from the board. First, I just want to thank, uh, the County Solid Waste, um, Commission, uh, for allowing us to go into a five-year contract. This was, this was something unusual when we entered into the last contract. And it was because of the situation that we had encountered with our previous, uh, waste hauler and.
By, you can only otherwise do it but for two years, which is hard to get a competitive bid.
So this is. Because we had in the past, because of what happened with the last one, where they yanked the permit on our.
I remember that.
But we've also, we, we usually have done like anywhere from three to five, but it's recent, but the, you can only allow to have two without their approval. But obviously it's hard to get a competitive bid for two years when people are investing in the infrastructure.
Yes.
So you want to do a longer term.
Okay.
To get better pricing.
Okay. So we thank the County Solid Waste Commission for allowing us to do that five-year because it does give us a more competitive bid. I'd also thank CRP Sanitation, um, because I don't get any calls about.
I am.
Well, knock on wood, but, um, it's, no, this, this has been, I think, you know, given what services that we've had in the past, I think the residents of Rybrook have been very satisfied with the service that's been provided to our residents. And, and I think, um, certainly I haven't had issues personally as a resident. Um, but it's, um, you know, it's, it's something that I think, you know, for good or bad, people have become used to of expecting a high-quality, you know, sanitation service, which, which I think they get, uh, through this, through this contract, so. Questions?
I would just add to the, uh, rear yard collection service is currently $35 a month. So it's actually a $5 reduction for the optional rear yard collection service. So that is a $5 a month savings. Uh, again, a 25% military and senior discount. And the first year is a savings from the current contract, although the second year goes up almost 12% and then it's a 5% increase from there on.
Yeah, we'll just budget accordingly. We'll make sure that.
Very strange thing. What was the reason behind that? Have you any idea?
Yeah, I'm trying to go with, we, we said our labor rates are basically set by New York State. And New York State has given us no guidance on what our labor is gonna be. The last update that we've had was February 1st, 2024. Our guy's got a 5% increase just this past February. We have no guidance going forward what our labor is gonna be. So we basically just looked at the last 20 years and what New York State has done. So they usually go a big increase and then maybe a little increase, a big increase, you know, they, they've alternated that. But in the, in the past five years, the benefit package that New York State is mandating has gone up a dollar an hour every single year. So it's kind of been hit and miss with New York where they set the labor rates and our labor cost is 70% of this contract. So, um, the other 10%, another 10% of it is fueled, which.
Of course.
Two years ago, in March, we were paying $7.50 a gallon for diesel. And right now we're paying under four. So that's volatile.
Bargain.
Yeah, it's.
Who knows?
So we, you know, we're experienced in this, you know, we try and, you know, see what people have done in the past and, you know, just try and model where we're going, you know, based on that, you know, in our experience, so. Also the life of trucks, we've, in the, in the last couple of years, we've invested in new tr- new equipment in Rybrook to, to make it a little more efficient. So we're able to lower the price year one, but figuring that we may have to do a couple more investments, you know.
Going forward.
Going forward, so that, you know, that anyways, we'll cover that.
And I think if we average it, you know, it averages out.
I'm just asking because it was a, it was a very bizarre.
It's very interesting, yes.
It's more, the year one is more, we actually decreased year one. That's more of like, um, kind of, we, we did these prices four and a half years ago. So four and a half years ago, we kind of bet pretty close, but we actually said, well, we could probably decrease this a little bit to be competitive with other bidders. And, you know, that's what, that's why we dropped it year one and then, uh, you know.
Beat up for the next year.
Right.
But we, you know, we, we're, we're happy to be here. We, we have a great relationship with the staff in the town and, uh, you know, if you do get complaints, we like to hear about them because we like to resolve them, so. You know, I mean, any, any event that, you know, somebody does get their stuff missed, we want to hear about it.
One of the things we're able to do though, once we saw that the drop in price for the June 1st start, is we're able to get rid of all the street sweepings that we have up at the compost site. So now we have the bid and the amount in this bid for removal of the street sweepings, you know, they have to be taken off-site. And that's, that's, uh, an expensive endeavor. So we're looking to wipe clean the, the pile of street sweepings that we have up there with that savings that we have.
And your price is cheaper than what I'm paying now by $15 a truck.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's good. And again, the residents also, if they do get the backyard, and do you have any idea how many get that in Rybrook?
It's, it's probably close to 200 residents.
200 residents pay for the backyard. It's a $5 a month savings for the first two years.
Two years, yeah.
I wish you'd send that out on a note. I don't think I was aware of that.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah.
Comments? Again, thank you for the service you've provided to, to Rybrook in the past.
Nice to hear. Uh, we get a lot of complaints, you know, we're just, you know, we're there a minute too late sometimes, but, but it's, people like their routines, but it's nice to hear compliments, so, you know, we appreciate it.
I don't mind the minute too late because it gives me time to get everything out. It's when I forget and I'm running, and I'm running for the street.
I hear the trucks and that's when I'm like, oh my God, I have to go.
People like their routines and they don't like their routines broken, so we should hear about it.
I say you really hear about it if you get there early.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
That creates a whole host of problems.
Yeah, and I know.
Motion in a second, please.
Yeah. All right.
Sound real good.
I think we already had.
Yes.
Did you vote?
Yeah.
No, we have not voted, but we already did the motion second, yes.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Uh, resolution number four, considering reallocation of capital projects, closing of capital projects, and modifying capital projects.
All about capital projects.
All about capital projects. How many times can I say that?
I'm not gonna sit here, I don't think, and go through each one of these transfers, but what I will say is, this is basically us, um, where we were short on some capital projects, moving some closed balance, some minor balances and some to, uh, pay for other ones where we, we were needed, and need additional funds, like the police body worn camera replacement. Um, we have to do, we need additional funds there. So some of these are just closing out balances and other accounts. Um, I'll read the resolved and I think it's self-explanatory. Now therefore be resolved that the following transfer between capital projects is approved, provide additional funding for the police body worn cameras, the general foreman truck, and the replacement of tablets in the police vehicles. Uh, and be it further resolved that the following capital project budgets are restated. So that basically is just putting the additional funding into the, the body worn cameras and tablets account. And be it further resolved, the following capital projects with no remaining balances are closed and removed from the capital project length schedule. And this is basically closing out the list of projects that are included in the resolution. And be it further resolved that the following capital projects funded through debt obligations be closed and the remaining balances be returned to the debt ser- debt service fund. And that's the highway dump truck, uh, with a balance of $110, goes back to the debt service fund. And be it further resolved that the NRCS Recovery Capital Fund project be modified to reflect the receipt of federal grant funds from the NRCS, uh, filed for the appraisal services and the market data brochure. So the bottom ones, you're gonna see this as this project continues because we have to advance funds. And then return the funds. So you have to increase revenues, increase appropriations. It ends up being a net zero. We've got the funds already, but we're gonna see this as this project continues every time we get it.
Created that line in a previous meeting.
Yep, we created the account, yep. Be it further resolved, the following capital projects be modified to reflect the receipt of New York State Highway Aid reimbursement. So we got Highway Aid in, so we have to modify the accounts for that. And be it further resolved, the following transfer between capital projects be hereby approved. And that's for road resurfacing. This is basically moving everything just forward to a 2024, uh, project fund. So we have it all in one place. And be it further resolved that the following capital project with zero remaining balances be closed and removed from the project length schedule. And that's the old project, road resurfacing project, which was just above it, moved into the 2024 line. Any questions?
One more, right?
No, that's it.
Oh, that's it. Okay, I see. Okay. Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Can I move?
Second.
Luckily. Through my history on this board, I've never had to question what you and Trish do.
We're keeping everybody out of trouble.
And I know, and, and so, and thankfully, because I am no CPA and I have, a lot of this is, um, and, and I understand that it has to be done and this is, this is great. And, and it's part of why year after year, we receive a very low score in our stress test.
That's right.
And, and our audit comes back clean.
And that's it. And that's why you try to close, that, you'll see this type of resolution this time of year because we're trying really hard to close capital projects because auditors don't like to see a lot of open projects that have been funded in the past. So you want to close each one out as best you can. Um, and that's why you're seeing those lists out.
I do understand. I do have a question.
Yeah.
What's going on with all the body worn camera replacements? Why do we need so many?
I'll let, I'll let the police chief.
What's going on?
Answer that one.
Yeah. So how often do we replace them?
We've had these cameras since 2016, they've been sunsetted by the, by the company, so the, um.
I just feel like we've just paid for them.
Well, we had, um. So there's, there's sunset, they're being sunsetted by the, by the company, so they're going to, so no longer, no longer will be under covered by the, the warranty contract. They do break, you know, and, and this company has a very good warranty contract with replacement of cameras. And, you know, rather than have a camera break and then unable to purchase a new one because they're no longer going to be being manufactured, we have to move to this new system.
And we already had approved a capital project for this. This is just some additional funds to be able to do.
And we also have a $60,000 grant from DTJS.
Right. Yeah.
So then that would make a lot more sense, okay? God, I just, I just thought that was a good answer. I like that answer. Never mind.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And, and certainly as anyone who's been on this board a while knows, we, we really do what we can to try and support our police force.
Oh, of course. I wasn't questioning that. I just, it's just, I, I thought that we just funded something like that, but now I see that it was. It was just a, okay.
It just seems like.
Well, you probably saw that capital, from our capital project.
Yeah.
Our capital funds.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number five, considering modification of the fiscal year 2324 general fund adopted budget.
Uh, I hope this is the last we hear about this Pontiac GTO.
Yeah, what's going on?
Therefore be resolved that the fiscal year 202324 general fund adopted budget is modified to record seized asset furniture proceeds on the 2004 Pontiac GTO that was awarded to the village of Rybrook on December 2023 as follows, and it was for $9,400. As we know, those dispersed to several locations, uh, the county and others that are required to get it for seized, uh, assets like that. Be it further resolved that the adopted budget is modified to reflect insurance recovery funds as a result of flood damage in December 23 on the Village Hall Building interior and exterior, ex- outside the rec department to be used for repairs as follows, and that's $12,006.19. Be it further resolved that the fiscal year, uh, 2024 adopted budget is modified to correct the accounting code change due to reporting requirements under GASB. Statement 87 leases as follows, and that's to transfer from lease revenues and, um, increase into lease revenues and decrease the cell tower lease. Basically that's saying the cell tower lease has to come out of appropriations and that account has to be put into the lease revenue account, not a cell tower revenue lease account. And be it further resolved that in fiscal year 2324, the following general fund transfer be approved. And that's the designated for capital funds balance moved over and increase, deep, is increased and the designated for fund balance is decreased. So that was what was planned in the budget.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Can I move?
Second.
I just figured the GTO was on there again because Michael's still showing off how much he got for that.
And I'm stuck with Ronnie in the Daytona singing Little GTO, wouldn't I?
All right. Again, another piece of housekeeping.
Yep.
And, uh, again, the reason why our audit comes back clean every year. Um, because of the great job of, uh, everyone in, in the finance department now. Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number six, considering setting a public hearing for April 9th, 2024 on the 2425 tentative budget.
Now therefore be resolved that the public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the village of Rybrook on Tuesday, April 9th at 7:30 PM, which will include opportunities for interested members of the public to provide written and oral comments regarding the proposed 2024 slash 2025 tentative budget for the village of Rybrook. And be it further resolved that the notice of public hearing shall state the time, place, purpose of the hearing, and a copy of the tentative budget is available in the office of the village clerk for inspection during regular business hours and posted on the website at rybrook.org.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Can I move?
Second.
It is absolutely that time of year again. And, and the budget was, the budget was given to us on, uh, last Wednesday. Um, and. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything because I know during the administrator's report, there's gonna be some highlights on it. But, um, for anyone who is interested in the public to speak on the 9th, but also to come to our open workshops, our budget workshops on April 1st and April 8th, um, we would certainly love to see you there. Any questions or comments? This is setting the public hearing for the budget.
No comments. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, I forgot what number I'm on here. Resolution number seven, uh, considering modifying the date, the date of a village board meeting in April, which the resolution is incorrect.
Yep. Okay.
Because of my.
Whereas a regularly scheduled meeting, uh, for April 23rd falls on the Jewish holiday Passover. And whereas the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees wishes to modify the date of the April 23rd, 2024 meeting to avoid conflicting with the holiday, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby modifies the meeting day on April 23rd, so that it'll be held on April 24th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Can I move?
Second.
I'm sorry, that, that I did this.
No, it's quite all right. I will get.
Well, I know the 23rd doesn't work for any, well, most of us. And the 24th is, I think, we'll at least have a, we'll, we'll have at least three or four of us. All right. Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number eight, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on October 24th, 2023.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on October 24th, 2023.
Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Administrator's report.
One second to catch up.
Yeah. Are you gonna go on the screen or?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, this isn't, that's, that's on the 9th.
Okay.
Should I, this is very, a very brief overview, uh, as required by village law. So this is just a very brief, kind of more high-level overview of the budget. Um, going through it, the tentative budget was filed on Wednesday, March 20th, as required by village law. It's now the village board's budget. Uh, for the second year in a row, we offer, offer the budget on it as a digital budget book through ClearGov. So if you go to our website, you'll see a banner at the top that will bring you right to the ClearGov page. And it's really meant to be more transparent, more interactive, uh, more information is on there about prior budgets and histories, about the accounts and all about the village. Uh, budget work sessions with departments are scheduled for Monday, April 1st and Monday, April 8th at 6 o'clock here at Village Hall. The budget hearing is proposed now, is now gonna, been set for April 9th, and now the budget has to be adopted by May 1st or the tentative budget becomes the budget. So an overview of the budget, um, again, we always kind of have four clear goals we say every year. Keep the taxes as low as possible, provide quality services, reinvest in our infrastructure, and main fiscal stability. So I think, uh, we accomplished that in this year's budget again. The tax levy is a $19 million, $19.4 million, uh, budget on the levy. And, uh, that's a 3.86 increase, which is below the tax cap. Uh, we're about 11,000 below the tax cap. We could have gone to about 3.92. It's the 12th time in 13 years that the tax cap has been in existence that we've been under the tax cap. Total operating budget is about 25.7 million and it has a 1.16 million in capital projects. Uh, and the to, so that makes the total budget 26.88. Good news, our assessed value for the village is, is up. That's a good thing for Rybrook, both on the commercial and residential side. So it's, we're up about 249 million, uh, million dollars in value. That's a, almost seven point, that's a 7.6% increase. So that's a good thing. It shows healthy. Our property values are going up. The homestead's up about 233 million and the non-homestead's up about 16 million over the prior year. So again, two positive signs, signs. In terms of staffing, total full-time positions goes up by one position to 76. There's the elimination of the senior rec position, which was a retirement earlier in the year. That's Janice, as we know, retired. And, uh, the addition of a police officer and a laborer position. Uh, it's heavy on capital again, about 1.28 million in capital, with the largest being road resurfacing and sewers. That's our basic infrastructure. We need. That's our basic infrastructure, we need to make sure that we continue to maintain, it's kind of the, the lifeblood of, of the infrastructure, is maintaining our, the roads and the sewers. Uh, average home in Rybrook is 995,013, and that taxpayer would pay about 5,000 per year in village taxes, and it's about a $167 increase over the prior year. Some of the positives in the budget generally, uh, there's a strong fund balance again, uh, we reinvest in our infrastructure, we're fiscally sound, uh, we have a, you know, AA, AA1, uh, bond rating, we have a zero fiscal stress monitoring, so that we just got the announcement from the state saying they evaluated our fiscal stress system, and we got a zero, which is as low as it could be. Uh, concerns start at, concerns start at 45, uh, that's when it comes to a warning or concern, uh, with the lean, hard-working staff, we have a great staff here, uh, that works and does their best to do, really provide great services to the village. Interest earnings is up very significantly because of the interest rates, so that's, that's a positive sign, help offset some of the other losses that we had. And obviously, we have the SRO and the Portchester High School and Middle School through the police department, that's a big program, and, uh, the additional police position is largely going to be, uh, covering those two schools. The, uh, not that person, but the, the need for an additional to backfill. Concerns that we have is still, we have that differentiating rate, still the pretty big difference in rates between the homestead and the non-homestead, that's still a concern, you know, we need to get more homestead values into the village, but there's a lot of positive signs coming with the developments that are out there. So those are good signs. The interest rates and inflation is also leading to higher costs, health insurance and retirement is again, you know, really, really high, retirement is, uh, for the biggest groups that have it, it's for the employee system, it's 17.8 cents on the dollar, and for the police and fire, it's 34.8, uh, cents on the dollar. So that's a big piece of the, of our cost. Commercial redevelopment looks promising, but isn't yet progressed, but we're, we see things that are bright on the horizon, uh, and as a result, our building revenues have been kind of flattening, so we haven't seen that. Uh, we look forward to working with the board to, so you can complete the budget and get it adopted by May 1st. That's it for the budget part.
Great. Anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, a couple of other quick things. Well, I was, I wanted to announce that we're going to have, uh, free hot dogs and major league baseball opening day event at Pine Ridge, but I don't think the weather looks like it's very promising for Thursday, so very likely going to be canceled.
We won't run out of hot dogs.
No, we won't, we weren't going to this year for sure. Um, again, we mentioned about the fiscal stress monitoring, uh, the airport also, our airport master plan task force had their first meeting yesterday, and it was a very good meeting. We have representatives from seven different communities, which I think is pretty, uh, pretty unusual to get that kind of a task force of seven communities all trying to work together, find commonalities, find some shared goals that we can express and work with and give of what, some voices to the county on any concerns on the master plan and the terminus agreement. And also, as the mayor said, and I mentioned before, April 1st and April 8th, we have the budget workshops, and Arbor Day is, uh, the end of next month, but we're going to have a very special day where we can recognize Ashley Weldy, and we've been working with the Town of Ry and the, um, and the Blind Brook School District, so that we can have, uh, all three groups really working together, have a nice recognition for Ashley Weldy and her family.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any other questions, comments from the board?
I have one.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate trustee Susan Epstein on her resounding victory over trustee David Heiser.
Yes, and I would congratulate both of you, who were newly re-elected to the board, um, for another term of three years. Why we continue to do this to ourselves is beyond me, but...
It's because it's the right thing to do.
It is, and, and we thank you for volunteering your time.
I can answer your question as to why, inertia.
And, yeah, and, and just thank you for volunteering, continuing to volunteer your time, um, you know, those of us who sit up here know that it's, you know, that, that, it's a lot of work that we've put into doing this.
Yeah, but we get that t-shirt every so often.
And it's, and it's, yeah, and it's, and it's solely out of love for our shared community.
Absolutely.
That we do it, and, you know, thank you for both of you, what you continue to bring to the board, and I look forward to serve, continuing to serve with you.
Likewise, we do it so we can have this camaraderie and have the wonderful village administrator and staff that we love working with, we're very pleased to be part of it. But I also want to say that anybody, and, and really, anybody who would like to volunteer, we need you, we want you to join us, please, be a part of your community.
Yes, and to that, to that end, at our next meeting, we go through the boards and commissions, which we discuss in our executive session, and we are always looking for volunteers, and would love people to, to come out and help.
It's a great team all around, that's for sure, and, and the office starts officially the first Monday in April, so we'll have to have a swearing-in ceremony, and we'll...
Cookies, cookies.
Yeah, another swearing-in ceremony, and, and the first Monday in April is when you take office, but we have a traditional, probably before the next meeting in April.
Wait, wouldn't, wouldn't that be when we have our budget discussion is the first Monday?
You could do that, we'll have you, we're going to have you sign the oath book that day, but there'll be another signing on, on the first meeting.
We'll do an official, we'll do the official event where you go up there and everything, we'll do that.
On April 8th.
On the, on the 9th.
9th, April 9th.
April 9th, okay.